Township Zoning Commission meeting for April 22, 2024. I'd like to take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. And now I'd like to move to approval of the minutes. We'll start with November 20th of 2023.
I'll make a-
Any comments first of the meeting minutes?
No comments.
Okay, then I will now entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 20th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
Okay, please call roll.
Mr. Henson?
Epstein.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Epstein.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. The second housekeeping is to approve the minutes for February 26, 2024. Any changes to the, to the minutes?
No.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 26, 2024 minutes.
Second.
Is it second? Please call roll.
Mr. Henson?
Epstein.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Epstein. Proof three zero. Now moving to the main part of the agenda. The first case is a public hearing of the final development plan approval request in case one dash two zero two four. For thirteen oh three, nineteen twenty-one, twelve seventy-nine and twelve sixty-seven, Eight Mile Road. Filed by Josh Blatt on behalf of John Henry Homes, on behalf of Eight Mile Development Company LLC. Property owner, it's own DD planned multiple resident district. The applicant is seeking FDP approval for six town home buildings with a total of thirty-six units. As well as a variance to the front yard setback of twenty-seven feet for the open covered front porches on building one, which previously was approved at thirty-one. We'll now hear staff's report. Paul?
All right, thank you. As Mr. Chair stated, the applicant is Josh Blatt of John Henry Homes on behalf of Eight Mile Development Company LLC property owner. This is a final development plan review as well as a variance request. And the variance request again is for a front yard setback of twenty-seven feet where it was approved for thirty-one feet. However, as you'll see in the site plan, the thirty-one feet is the same, or the setback of the building is the same distance. There was some confusion with the site plan. So a little bit of the site history, there was an open house in 2023 of September. There was a future land use map amendment to, from single family to transitional residence in December of 2023. And then there was a zone change application following the future land use map. The Board of Trustees approved the zone change with two conditions. And with the final development plan, the, the primary purpose of this meeting is to ensure that the plan that is submitted is consistent with what was presented during the zone change hearings. In addition to clarification of that front yard setback. So this is the area that underwent a zone change to DD planned multiple, multiple family. This is Eight Mile Road going north-south, and then this is Cherry Lane here, on the southern portion of the site. This is the aerial view of the site in question. Again, these were where some of the former single family homes were on the site. And again, Cherry Lane to the south, Eight Mile Road, north-south. This is the zoning map. And then again, this is the zone change plat. And this is the site plan. It's, it's very difficult to see on the small PowerPoint. However, on your hard copy plans, you'll be able to see. This corner of the building here, the setback was actually drawn from the front porch, although, I'm sorry, it was drawn from the building itself and not the front porch. Front porches can extend into the front yard setback, a minimum of ten feet. The required front yard setback in this zoning district is forty feet. So a variance was granted to thirty-one feet. However, the, the setback was drawn to the building and not to the porch. So technically, a front yard setback of twenty-seven feet is required versus thirty-one feet. So that is the clarification. And the building footprint and the setback has not changed. There was just some confusion of what that dimension actually was. Again, with the findings, we'll go through this fairly quickly because essentially the plans have not changed since you reviewed them during the zone change hearing and during the future land use map. The building locations are the same. There were only, you know, during the zone change hearings, it was found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. With the township design guidelines, there was some discussion specifically about the mixture of building materials and the type of siding. While that wasn't a condition with the zone change, it was a question raised during the zone change hearing. So the proposed material is still vinyl siding with a mixture of stone. So that was a question that was raised during the zone change hearing for discussion tonight. There was also a question about, this is the grading plan, and how the grading plan might impact the landscaping plan, specifically along the perimeter of the property. And specifically this corner here, which is the south, I'm sorry, the northwest corner. So this is the proposed landscaping plan that was submitted. They are proposing to, or they identified fifteen trees to remain. That was a question that was brought up during the zone change hearing. What trees of significance could be maintained versus what would be removed and what would be, and to ensure that the grading plan was consistent with the landscaping plan. So this is the landscaping plan. Again, there were fifteen trees to remain that are identified on the landscaping plan with the addition of these other trees and shrubs. Back to the elevation drawings. This is building one. So this was the building that would face Eight Mile Road with the front porches facing the roadway and rear entry garages. These are samples of building two and then building three through six. These had your, uh, front entry garages, and then the rear had the patio and the doors. So these are some of the drone photos that were taken last fall. Again, this is looking down Cherry Lane to the west. This is looking generally to the north. These were some site photos we took on the fifteenth. So these are updated site photos, just to give you an idea of the existing vegetation without the leaves on the trees or as they're coming in. This is looking due west from that private, or the driveway from one of the remaining homes. Or what was one of the homes? And then this is looking from that same location, looking over toward Cherry Lane. This is the end of Cherry Lane here. So again, with the findings, um, again, we won't go through these. These are, the design, the use of the property is still consistent with the comprehensive plan. With the township design guidelines and site planning, architecture, the lighting plan that was submitted is consistent with our, our parking light, lighting requirements. Our trails plan, there is a trail or sidewalk that's proposed along Eight Mile. To tie into the network on Peachmont Avenue. And then the tree committee did have the comment about identifying some of the mature trees that were able to be saved and then protecting those with ANSI A three hundred standards. Again, the zone change resolution, there were, from the trustees, there were only two conditions. One was that the parcels be consolidated. That is in process. That has not happened yet. And then number two, that a future cross-access easement to the northern property line for emergency and pedestrian access be shown, and that has been shown on the plans. So the only two conditions, one is in process and the other is compliant. As far as the variance, staff is supportive of the variance due to these three factors. That again, the, these are the same factors that were considered during the zone change, and we felt like that is the same. It's just a clarification between twenty-seven and thirty-one feet. Be happy to answer any questions. Again, there were only two conditions. However, some of the discussion during the zone change reflected around the building materials and the landscaping plan. So the applicant can answer some of those questions that were being proposed.
Thanks, Paul. Just real quick, when you say it's in process, is it just a matter of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, or they haven't applied, or where does it stand?
That'd be a question with the applicant. I don't know if it has officially been submitted to the county yet for recording.
Any concerns?
No.
Okay, great. All right, we'll start with Commissioner Henson. You have any questions of staff?
Only one. Paul, I was looking for a pictured down cherry, and it's sort of a, only semi-related question. Is there on-street parking on cherry currently, or is it?
No, it's a, it's a private drive, and there's no on-street parking in that, I believe.
That's all I think.
Okay. Commissioner Elaf?
Thank you. Hey, Paul, on that northwest buffer where they identified the trees, did, did you guys look at those trees? Are those, are they decent to remain there, or what are they?
These-
I don't see any specs on it. Yeah.
So I did walk on, on the fifteenth, I did walk through here. Some of these were maples, some were not on their property, some were on the adjacent property. This were honeysuckle, of course. So they were on the very, you can see the stakes here. So some of these larger trees were actually not on their property.
Okay, so the ones identified aren't necessarily on the property, as far as you could tell?
There aren't, let me go back to the landscaping plan. So these three trees here were identified to remain, which are on the property or right on the border.
Yes.
There were some larger trees in this particular area that I don't believe are on the property, that we can ask the applicant to clarify that. And then there were some smaller trees, as well as the honeysuckle. In that particular area. And if you do look at the grading plan, they did pull the grading a little tighter to that building number two here to limit disturbance in that corner.
Gotcha. So am I just reading, I'm on sheet, what is it, six oh thirteen? And it says, there's a note that says existing vegetation remain. Circles represent approximate location of trees to remain, see schedule. Sorry, I'm making a noise there. I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding.
There was another sheet that had the tree.
It's just, uh, blackberries.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Numbered by the-
I see. Okay.
Did your question get answered?
Yes, I think, I think that they're identifying quite a few trees there, it looks like.
Okay.
Are you on page six oh thirteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Henson pointed out the schedule that corresponds to those numbers.
Great. Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, Paul, I got one, one question definitely for you, and that is the building two. When I was looking at it, it sits back thirty feet two inches from the rear property line. And as I read it, and I wasn't here for the, the public hearing, but it was supposed to be forty feet to the rear property line? Are we, are they asking for a variance for that as well?
Which property, are you talking about the northern property line or the western property?
Line for building two. Is, I believe, thirty feet two inches?
There was not a request for a variance there.
Had re-approved it earlier to be less than forty?
The way the, the raid, the red, and the staff report anyway, there was that all front and rear property lines were to be forty feet.
Okay.
But again, I was not at that hearing. I missed that, so.
So are you referring to, um, so in Article three point nine D, number two, so no building shall be closer than forty feet to any front or rear lot line, or closer than fifteen feet in the case. Closer than fifteen feet in the case of a one or two-story building, or closer than thirty feet in the case of a three-story building to any side lot line.
It's the rear setback, correct?
And maybe I misunderstood, but I, I'm, I'm reading it that the front and rear had to be forty feet. And that's why we were here to, they were here this evening was because one of the fronts is not, but I also think potentially building two's rear is not.
It was not a separate variance for the rear, but I'm trying to determine if we were considering that a rear yard. I know the buildings are oriented that way.
Yeah, I mean, I think, my opinion is if the front yard is on Eight Mile, then that's their rear yard.
Yes, I mean, by straight definition, it's opposite the front. And then they were required to have, um. So that was not called out during the, the zone change meeting. The buildings were, are still the same. So is something. Should probably be clarified tonight.
You might have, you might have, when you guys reviewed it, you might have thought that was just a continuation of the side yard, sort of, because the-
I mean, it's an L shape.
Irregular.
Right, it's an irregular, right. So we didn't call it out as needing a variance.
I mean, I don't, I think it is a rear yard.
It could use one, potentially. You could argue that for sure.
I don't think it's a side yard at all. The rear of the building faces that line. It's parallel to Eight Mile. How is that a side yard? No.
I got you.
Do you need to do additional checking, or?
No, I think if you feel, I mean, if you feel that that needs to be clarified out as a variance, there is, um, under the general requirements, under F. Well, there's two different options, I guess. So under D and five, it, it does give the, the zoning commission the authority to approve this because it is a planned district. So you can waive some of the setback requirements.
And I'm not trying to be difficult.
No.
Do we have the ability, though, to modify something that the Board of Trustees approved, meaning the forty-foot rear yard setback?
The trustees approved the plan that was submitted to them, which is this plan.
Language, did they not?
The language, which language though we refer? For the front yard, because it was, it was identified that they needed a thirty-one foot, and that was the only dimension that was really quoted in the resolution.
But, but the resolution doesn't say forty feet front and rear?
The, the zone change resolution.
The trustees' resolution?
I don't believe it does. I think it only called out-
That's the inference I got out of the-
It says no building shall be closer than forty feet in any front or rear lot line.
We can get to the language here.
Does this go, go back to the trustees one more time?
No.
Okay, then we need to address it?
Right, so we need to address it. We'll, we'll figure this out.
Okay, why don't we table?
She's looking up-
She's gonna look it up. Why don't we?
The resolution real quick.
Okay, and I guess that, because then it would be, my, my concern is if it isn't within the resolution, I don't know that we have the ability to modify that, do we?
The only setback that was called out was the front yard sep, well, again, we're gonna figure that out.
Going from thirty-one to twenty-seven.
Well, I understand tonight, but I'm just saying, relative to the forty-foot required rear setback. If that was specified in the resolution, I don't believe that we have-
It, it wasn't. So number three, um, I'm sorry, number-
Number two, is the request, the requested thirty-foot front yard setback is consistent with the underlying requirement of the C single-family?
Which is what you're addressing tonight, because on the plan, there was some confusion of what that dimension actually was. So that's what you are addressing tonight, and that's what was advertised. But then, my opinion is that the trustees approved the development plan with that setback in the rear. They didn't specify that out in the different language.
So, and just so I'm clear, because some, somewhere in the staff report, I read that, that the forty feet was required in the rear.
Okay, so that is in the variance request. That was quoting the zoning resolution. So, and what I think you are seeing is on the last, or on page four of the staff report. That was quoting Article three point D from the zoning resolution.
Okay, so you're, you're thinking that what they approved on the plan, even though it wasn't identified as less than forty, supersedes that?
Yes.
Okay.
Good catch.
It is a good que, catch, and you know, after we hear public testimony and whatever your motion ultimately is, if you think that needs to be clarified, we can clarify that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gothard?
I have a couple of questions. Along the north property line, the foot candles exceed three, point three to point four. I apologize, I didn't go into the, the zoning to see what is allowed, but seems like it was always point one, if I remember correctly, to a single-family residence. And then on the drive, has there been discussions whether this is gonna be a public drive or a private drive?
It's a private drive.
Okay, because you know, the curb sort of terminates at these, along the south end, and then also back where the T for the fire department turnarounds are. So, okay. Uh, that's the only question I have for staff. Thank you.
Okay, seeing, I, I don't, I do not have any questions for staff. Additional questions? At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up, state your name, your address, your affiliation with the case.
Good evening. I'm Josh Blatt with John Henry Homes, Eight Mile Development Company. It's good to be back here. And so I think Paul's really covered this, and I think you guys have seen this project two times already. And really, everything is substantially the same from what we presented in our very first presentation and that we brought back for our last meeting. So I think, probably the most important thing, I think Paul has addressed, I think the landscaping was a big issue the last time we were here, and the concern on that north corner. We did do a tree study after that meeting, and we adjusted our grades on building two to minimize any impact on that. We, we held the grade down, so. And we do have the tree, and I, I think you guys were looking at the tree study that shows, calls out all the trees on there, but, so we took the feedback to heart, and we made changes. Uh, I think one thing that has been recognized in all of our hearings is we put really substantial landscaping into the plan, especially on the perimeters of the property, kind of behind us on cherry especially. So when we designed it, obviously, we talked about our elevations and what we're looking for. We put the, obviously, we have the porches on it. We put the stone along the front. We've got the dimensional shingles. So we really put a lot of thought into our design with our architects and what we're doing. We do have, on anything facing, on the sides on Eight Mile, the buildings have stone wrap on those, on anything visible. I know one of the concerns probably that came up here last time was there was a recommendation of using hardy plank. We have, we've, our product is designed with vinyl, and I know that's important to a couple of you, and I want, so I did bring an example of. And the reason, and the reason why for us this is important, and we're obviously, we're, we're happy to have your feedback on it, is that hardy plank, obviously, even with the pre-finished hardy plank fades at different levels. It's, you've got to constantly paint it. I know they tell you it's maintenance-free. It doesn't have to be painted. It does have to be painted. And the nice thing about it, the siding does not fade as much. It holds up better over time. And so one of the things we did, and we mentioned our project in Mason where we used a premium vinyl product, and I just want to give you guys an example of, this is a standard vinyl. Uh, this is a vinyl we use. It's a, it's a point four oh four thickness. It gets much deeper colors. We can get the deep blues, the deep grays. I'm happy to, if you guys want to look at it closer, I'm happy to provide that. But that's why it's important to us. But the product we want to use is Camden Point Veriform. And like I said, you can see on our Mason Oaks project, it's almost six years old. It held, it's held up well. The colors look good. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions that you have about the project. Just and again, as Paul said, on the variance, the plan always, and we can show you, was always shown at thirty-one feet to the porch, so, but.
You're talking about the front?
Yeah, on the front. So that was just, uh, so.
Okay. Again, we'll start down with Commissioner Henson. Commissioner Elaf?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Commissioner McBride?
I do have a few questions. Imagine that. So that was gonna be a question that it was gonna ask. So you're gonna use the heavy gauge vinyl?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and I, I personally, I've had clients use that before, and it's, it's been acceptable, so. The grading plan that's been revised, and maybe this is more for Mr. Watson, is the grading now been pulled out of the drip line of the existing trees that are to remain?
That's for Mr., that's for Mr. Watson.
I know Mr. Watson. I know Mr. Watson very well.
You have, state your, state your name, address, and affiliation.
Jim Watson, McGill Smith Punchin, thirty-seven hundred Park Forty-two Drive, Suite one nine zero B, Cincinnati four five two four one.
Thank you.
The, the grading footprint, that's, that's how we established how much reveal to put on the foundation. What will have northwest corner of building two, it'll have a taller foundation wall than all the other buildings, so it's gonna have some reveal on it. And we established where that, how low that reveal had to be by keeping the toe for fill outside of the drip line.
Great, that's the question I had. And then for you, I have a couple more. So you've got some evergreens there that I think you've got at six and seven. Would you be opposed to taking those to eight and, to nine feet? Because you know, if you put six to seven, you're gonna get five, five and a half, right? So I'd like to see those at eight to nine. And then you've got a mix in there of white pine, and those are not, as you know, always successful in this area. So I think you might want to rethink the white pine. Oh, here comes Mr. Watson with a comment on the white pine.
We've, we've done some modification on, on the landscaping. The, the original landscape plan we submitted. Had twenty-nine evergreens, eighteen of them were white pines, eleven were spruce. And then based on the feedback that we heard, we changed the, the, the quantity of those considerably to where we now have seven white pines. We have twenty-two spruce. The, the, basically, the, the feedback I'm getting from the landscape architects is that the white pines kind of get a bad rap. That, that yes, they, they, they can fail, but they don't always fail. And a lot of time, and most of the time, they actually don't. And that the, the white pines that we've got somewhat complements the design that they're trying to achieve. So that's the reason why we've got seven of them. But as I said, it's, it's, we started out with eighteen, so we've worked ourselves-
Yeah, I guess I would just suggest that maybe you look at, for those seven trees, another variety of pine or, or spruce or something like that. I understand you need to mix it up, because in case something comes through, you don't want to lose everything, and maybe you want to even take it more of a fifty-fifty split, but that's, that's, that's one suggestion.
Does staff have the most current landscaping plan, and does the commission? Okay.
Um, and then I guess the other question relative to landscaping in that back corner, because there is obviously a, a home behind there, is that you've got like two clumps of, of the evergreens to be added, and there's a break in the middle with just one, one tree in there, and I would ask that you add some additional to provide a continuous screening along there. along there.
Okay, all right.
And I think... Yeah. And I think that was all the questions that I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Gauthier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the building one adjacent to Eight Mile, appears like there's going to be twenty to twenty-four inches of foundation, you know, the CMU foundation showing. I know you spoke earlier in one of the previous meetings, the actual foundation landscaping would be worked out. But all the other buildings really have the finish almost coming to grade, which, you know, aesthetically, looks much better than almost two feet of CMU wall. Could you look at bringing that finish down closer to grade?
Yes. So, one thing we'll do on the CMU blocks, we'll use the decorative, decorative is the right term, but they've got a finish on the exterior of them that's more, it doesn't look like a block.
Like a split-faced block or something like that?
It's got like a sand, like a, I don't know if you go, a sand finish to it, or it's got, it's, you know, it doesn't have that just block look to it. I don't...
How do you describe that? It's a split face?
But it's, it's not just a pure block-looking. And then, we'll obviously landscape around that as well, so hide that as much as we can.
For the record, just state your name and your dress, affiliation.
Tony Ravignani, architect, 367th Street downtown. So, John, I'm looking at building one, front elevation, and I don't see what you're saying. I don't know if you have the most current one. I'm seeing the grade up, so there's really no block visible on the front. As we did, we were working with those grades.
Yes. Building one, rear elevation?
Oh, you're talking about the rear?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And the tricky part with the rear elevation there was because the garages were coming in at the same side. Okay. Yeah. And I think Josh was mentioning, you know, some split-face blocks, some other, maybe groundface, different kinds of decorative blocks.
Yeah, I think something, you know, decorative of split-face, I think would be acceptable. You know, something that's, that's okay. Yep.
All right.
Okay. Also, again, along the north property line, where it sort of drugs back south and comes across, you know, foot candles of point three, point four were on the adjacent property. I didn't see any call for like houseside shields on those light poles to, in essence, cut the light off quicker. You know, would that be acceptable to meet zoning code and also be friendly to the neighbors?
Yeah, if we, as long as it meets code, we're happy to do that.
Okay. And then, you know, I see that some areas are curbed. Some of them have, you know, integrated sidewalk along the drives. I didn't see really south of the drive that runs east-west, any call out for a curb along there. And then, as I mentioned to staff, you know, at the T turnaround before fire apparatus, the curb stops before you get to the T. Is there a plan to put sidewalk on the south of the east-west drive?
We'd not plan on putting a sidewalk.
Okay, with no curb on that either?
Right. We have, we've got curb on the, on the main driveway, east and west. We have it on the north side only, and it's there for drainage burrs. The driveway pitches, it doesn't, the driveway doesn't have a crown.
Right.
Okay, so it slopes from south to north. And the curb there is a drainage component. Once we get to the T turnaround, there's, we don't have a need for a drainage component because we've picked up the drainage before runoff on the street can reach the T turnaround area. Therefore, a curb in that area would, it doesn't serve drainage function, and it's would be absolutely decorative.
Okay. So, you know, sort of at the entrance to the T, there's your latch catch basin along the north of the drive. So, you're sheet draining the T onto the adjacent grade?
Into the detention basin.
Into the, down the grade and into the detention basin?
Yes. It's a very limited area, such that in that, it's a limited area. We're not going to have a quantity, a large quantity of concentrated water, so it's an erosion problem. So, that's, that's the reason why we made the choice to terminate the curb where we get.
Now, on the south side of that east-west drive, there's no curb planned?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, you know, I guess, adding on to Commissioner McBride's, you know, she was talking about the one tree, but that northeast corner, you know, yes, you have a fairly steep grade. Looking at the site photographs, and when I pulled in on the driveway, you know, there's not a lot of vegetation, even though you have a good grade difference. And those adjacent properties now are looking at rooftop or second story, which they didn't have before, you know. So, you know, I'd like to see some sort of vegetation sort of added on that northeast corner to, you know, limit views from adjacent properties onto, you know, the subject property. So, you know, I think we could put that in a motion, you know, and then work out with staff on, you know, some sort of screening. But, you know, shrubs, trees, sort of a mixture. Honeysuckle, you know, no one likes honeysuckle. No one loves honeysuckle, so everyone wants to eradicate it. But that's the only thing screening you right now, you know, is honeysuckle. So, okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Chair.
Great. Last call for any questions for the, for right now, for the applicant. Okay? At this time, I'd like to invite anyone up who wants to speak in support of the applicant. Seeing none, I'd like to invite anyone who is opposed. All right. Seeing none. Any questions back to staff? At this time, I'll close the public part of the case and invite the commission to offer comments about the case or offer a resolution.
I would ask my next-door neighbor here the question of, because you were talking about the curbing. Do you feel that T turnaround though should be curbed? Because, I mean, I can see people like Amazon going down there, turning around and running off, and, you know, mucking up the landscape.
You know, with the grade that's there, you know, it's sort of a stop for even somebody that's maybe driving down there at night and don't realize it's just a T and a termination. You know, I think it would be a good public safety sort of thing, so someone doesn't drive over.
You talking about landscaping or some other impediment to...
No, I think we're talking about a curb around that T turnaround, so that, just, you know, so vehicles don't go over into the grass or into the, you know, whatever.
Sure. Okay. Anything else from the commission?
Just a couple of comments on it. I was a little, I guess, wondering or hopeful we would see the hardy board siding. I've heard every, yeah, I get that vinyl is different thicknesses, but my opinion is it looks tremendously better. Then, secondly, since this is going to be rental units, it's imperative that we don't cut, cut little corners like we don't continue the curbing all the way, or we use substandard-grade evergreens on this. We only wrap, you know, part of it. So, I was like, you know, when I look at the elevations, I do like the elevations. I think the architects did a nice job on that. But I'm just hearing all these comments. I'm, I feel like, it's just like, we're kind of nickel-and-diming this project a little bit to save some money when it could be a tremendous project. I have continued to have, but I'm over the concern of wedging all these units in there. We've heard definitively on this that that is good planning for this area. But, I don't know. I, you know, I'm kind of in favor of it, but I was, I thought we could do better with some of the detail. I mean, I'm seeing like pages of detail notes being taken up here. I don't think that's necessary. I don't, I'm not sure why we didn't get a class-one rental project in this very, it could be a great site, or it could be, you know, it could be a vulnerable site. And we have to rely on you guys, the developers, to have a first-class unit here. And I'm just, I'm just a little concerned with all the notes I'm seeing taken on this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, my primary concerns were originally about the landscaping along Cherry Lane. And I've also driven myself batty back and forth because, you know, it's just so awkward to have all these apartment units rear-facing, it's a single-family residential, and it's fantastic landscaping. I would love to look out my, you know, door and see that as well across the street. And I don't necessarily want to have a green wall, but it's, I feel like that's just going to be a weird interaction for years to come for everybody involved having those buildings backwards like that. But it's really just a loud box.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have one additional question, and it may involve having the applicant come back up. And that's how waste is going to be handled? Paul, maybe you know the answer to that? Waste?
It was discussed in one of the previous meetings. I think Jim had their own container, so there would be a garbage truck.
So, Rumkey is going to, whoever is going to come in?
Can you very quickly confirm that?
Each unit will have their own garbage can, and it'll be, it's included in it, right? It's part of the lease, so...
Okay, thank you. Does that help you? Okay.
I have no other questions or comments based on what I stated before about the lighting, the CMU foundation walls, and the additional landscaping and the curbs.
Okay. Valid. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion, and hopefully, we can incorporate these concerns within the motion. I'm looking at you, Commissioner McBride?
One taking all the little notes? Yeah, sure. Okay, I would put forth a motion for discussion and comment, because I want to make sure I got everything, particularly with regards to the CMU. And that would be for approval of case one dash 2024 final development plan for the properties at 1303, 1291, 1279, and 1267 Eight Mile Road. And that would be a motion of approval pursuant to the recommendation from staff and the comments contained within the staff report, and also subject to the inclusion that if vinyl siding is to be used on the project, that it would have to be the heavy-gauge vinyl, number one. Number two, that the size of any of the proposed evergreen plant material be increased to at least eight to nine feet at planting. Number three, that there would be a better mix of plant material, more fifty-fifty distribution, and preferably without the white pine, some other type of evergreen. Number four, that there would be a significant increase in the landscape material in the northwest corner behind and around building number two. And, let's see, number, I lost my track on numbers. The next number, that the photometric lighting plan be revised to meet the requirements of the Anderson Township zoning resolution. That curbing be, next number, that curbing be extended around the T turnaround. And lastly, that the amount of CMU visible on building number one be decreased as it relates to Eight Mile Road.
Or a decorative CMU, split-faced or burnished, could be used, acceptable.
I would accept that amendment.
Yeah. Or a decorative CMU, concrete masonry unit, split-faced or burnished.
Any other additional amendments to...
I'm sorry?
Burnished. B-U-R-N-I-S-H.
Any other commissioners want to offer amendments to Commissioner McBride's motion?
Did you want to clarify the setback, rear setback of building number two?
Forty to thirty? It's already been proved.
If it is, no, I don't believe that we should do that. If that is, is the trustees approved it, and that the language was not in there requiring a forty-foot rear yard setback, then I don't think it needs to be addressed. If that forty-foot language was in there, then we have a different issue.
All right. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. So, again, any commissioners want to offer any amendments to Commissioner McBride's? Or do I have a second?
I will make a second.
I'm sorry, Sarah, do you have everything?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Roll, please.
Mr. Goethe?
No.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gauthier?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. So, thank you. If anyone's affiliated with the first case wants to depart, you may. Before we go on to the next, on the agenda, the next item. Give him a second.
Do you mind reading that for me? Okay, I'm going to ask you guys. I can only imagine. I'll tell you later. I went to see the doctor this morning.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, you're free to move up. All right, this time, we're going to do a quasi-judicial hearing for a major adjustment request in case two dash two dash two-one-five PUD for 7900 Beauchamp Avenue, filed by Wendy Muller, AICP of Compass Point, on behalf of PSS 100 LLC at three, property owner's owned E PUD retail plant unit development. The applicant is proposing to remove the previous approved outdoor storage of recreational vehicles and replace with ninety-five portable storage structures. Since this is a quasi-judicial, I'm going to ask Commissioner Gauthier to read a few things about how this is supposed to work. So, thank you.
First, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, just facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only become, only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will be then be, will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As previously stated, all persons wishing to testify whether for or against the application may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone, and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless the commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to support previous testimony, they may... Should someone wish to support previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear and affirm. Do you swear and affirm or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Now, Mr. Jury, could you please prevent, submit the staff's report?
I got it, I have it now.
And next time, I'm wearing a patch.
Thank you. Staff, can you?
You ready? Okay, uh, so this is case 2015 PUD. It's a major adjustment to this PUD. The applicant is Wendy Muller of Compass Point, on behalf of PSS 100 LLC at three, the property owner. The location is at seventy-nine hundred Beauchamp Avenue, and the current zoning, again, is E PUD Planned Unit Development. So the request is to allow ninety-five portable storage units to be placed aside and behind the existing storage facility, as well as increasing the outside storage area. And we've, we've already said this, so we'll go on to the zoning history, and we'll cover more when we're looking at the site photos. I think it's easier to explain that way. As far as case history, this site has quite a lengthy history. It started with case 11, nineteen ninety-three, which approved outdoor display of Frank's Nursery and Crafts. Case seven, nineteen ninety-eight Board of Zoning Appeals, that allowed for the construction of a storage facility of a hundred and eight thousand square feet in size where storage facilities are prohibited in the, um, E Retail Zoning District. Under that specific case, outdoor storage was not permitted. And then during case nine, twenty-two thousand two, and this resolution was included in your pocket, hopefully everyone got a copy of that, that permitted the outdoor vehicle storage, which contradicted case seven, nineteen ninety-eight. So, the outdoor storage before allowed for vehicles, mainly recreational vehicles like RVs, campers, and boats, up to twelve feet in height to be stored in the lot. And then vehicles specifically over nine feet in height were required to be stored behind the building. There was also several conditions required with that approval. Some of those are applicable to the current requests, and some are not. And then in case two, twenty fifteen PUD, that is the approval with Freshtime. Freshtime did a small addition onto the front. Before, with the outdoor storage, our PUD regulations were not in effect. But then with the Freshtime application, the PUD regulations were in effect. So it went from a Board of Zoning Appeals application to a PUD. So it went from Board of Zoning Appeals to zoning commission, and therefore with this request, we are hearing it with the zoning commission as an adjustment to the PUD. But again, the previous requests were through the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this is the property, a Cages property map outlined in red, an aerial photo, and with the aerial, you can see where the current outdoor storage is. It's this particular area here. These are the campers and the boats that are for the outside storage. And the outside storage is primarily, it's hard to say from the aerial, but, you know, this side of the building for the indoor storage, and then the outdoor storage over in this location. This is the zoning map. So this particular site was a PUD. Canes was also a separate PUD request, handled with a separate, uh, hearing, but this is the PUD area. And with this also, so to the north, this orange color is DD, which is planned multifamily. And then half of IHM is zoned, single-family. The other portion that fronts Beauchamp Avenue is zoned retail. So there's two different zonings for IHM. This is the site plan that was submitted. And again, what is proposed are these portable storage containers that would line the perimeter of the current outdoor storage area. This is where the current outdoor storage area stops with a fence and a gate. So it's proposed to extend that, relocate the fence and the gate pretty much in line, parallel with the front of the building, and then install additional landscaping. What was proposed with the additional landscaping was spring grove arbivites, and then with a, um, a metal, um, ornamental aluminum-style fence with the gate. But this is the area that is proposed to expand the outside storage area, which is approximately eleven thousand square feet. With this particular site, and with this, with the Freshtime PUD, it was conditioned cross-access, this, um, is cross-access over to the Township Operations Center and behind the Forest Schools, Forest Hill School, um, office building, all the way over to Firestone. And then there is cross-access as well to the west that goes over to IHM. This is an elevation drawing example of what one of these containers would be. They are proposed to be attached to the ground, however, they can be moved and removed. So this is the outside, um, the parking lot of where the storage would be expanded into this particular area. This is the existing privacy fence and the existing landscaping. Over here is IHM. This is the cross-access to IHM, and then this is Rawlings Lane that goes, um, serves a single-family home. This is the front of the extra space storage in the shopping center that has undergone a renovation. This is the area behind where it's currently being used for storage. And just on around the building, you can see there, um, this is the style of fence that would be proposed to be, uh, out front, uh, with landscaping in the front. On this other side, uh, this is Rawlings Lane. There's a wood privacy fence, and then on the other side of the wood privacy fence, it's just vegetation, and it's just a mixture of honeysuckle bushes and just other vegetation that's over, that has grown up. But this is the style of fence that would be moved toward the front. Again, just looking in the other direction, give you an example how it's being used currently. This is Rawlings Lane, so this gives you an idea of what the view is now, what leaves coming on with the trees. There is also a chain-link fence in here as well. So there's a mixture of a privacy fence and a chain-link fence. So with the PUD, there are several things that we're looking at. We're looking at compliance with the zoning resolution as compli- as well as compliance with the township adopted plans. Anything that's over sixty percent impervious surface requires a review by the zoning commission as part of the PUD. So as stated before, Article three point fourteen B twenty-two, um, does not permit outside storage for, or storage warehouses in the retail zoning district. So that was approved through a previous Board of Zoning Appeals case, and the request tonight is to change that use from vehicles to these portable storage containers, as well as increase the size of the outside storage area. Staff was of the opinion, in looking at our adopted plans, that it was consistent with the economic vitality chapter, as well as the land use and development chapter of our comprehensive plan. Same with the Beauchamp plan, even though that an area is being expanded, the cross-access is maintained in the same format it is today. With our Anderson Trails plan, nothing is proposed to modify any pedestrian connections to this building, and there is a sidewalk, uh, along the front edge of Beauchamp Avenue. So staff's recommendation, um, going through the PUD criteria, which there's fifteen criteria, is that it is compliant with adopted plans, and I won't go through all of these, just hit on some. Number three, compatibility with surrounding land uses. Staff felt like it was compliant. The proposed, uh, storage containers would have a maximum height of nine feet, two inches, whereas vehicles of thirteen feet were, are currently permitted under the current BZA approval. This also provides a consistent look. You know, the back of these provides a solid appearance, whereas with the different types of vehicles, the RVs and the boats, um, there's inconsistent of what, not, it's not consistent of what you might find back there. Felt like the size and the physical features of the project area, um, is still compliant. The area that is proposed is an underused parking lot. It's rarely used for this use, um, the site. It had parking variances over the years, but with the storage warehouse, it doesn't require as much parking as a normal retail use would, uh, require. Again, these others are, uh, conditions are, PUD criteria are compliant. Number eight, modifications of the zoning regulations are warranted. They are, and that should be compliant, not complaint, but they are, I thought I caught all of those. The proposal is, um, it's not on the plan itself. This was a question asked to the applicant about the type of landscaping, and they were proposing the spring grove arbivites, which would provide screening, adequate screening to the front. The rest of the site is pretty well screened by existing vegetation. Then also, just the adequacy of provisions of visual and acoustical privacy. The property to the west is the IHM Playfield, and it is screened beyond Rawlings Lane. And then the property to the north is zoned planned multifamily, but it is part of their open space area. So there are now, um, close, you know, residential uses in proximity. And again, number twelve, will it be detriment to the present potential surrounding uses? This, the outside storage is about twenty-two years old, if you can believe that. It has not been detrimental that we know of, or that we're not receiving complaints. We feel that this would be consistent with what was already approved. There were a couple of the conditions. Number one, if the zoning commission approves, staff recommends compliance with the plans. Number two, which was a condition carried over from the original approval. If operation, the primary use, that being indoor storage ceases, then this resolution authorizes outdoor storage shall be revoked and containers shall be removed. That was a condition, again, from the original approval, um, back in two thousand and two. Be happy to answer any questions that you have?
Okay. I just, um, I did, I want to tell the rest of the commission, from two thousand and three to two thousand and twelve, I was involved with Anderson Township Little League, and I had worked with this company and with the owners, I believe it was in North Carolina. We rented five units, and personally, I had an RV there from two thousand and nine to two thousand and nineteen. So, I don't think it affects my ability to hear the case.
And in full disclosure, I need to advise the commission that the applicant's representative, uh, Mrs. Muller, actually worked for me for a number of years. It has been a number of years since, unfortunately, since we didn't get to work together, but I, I think I can remain impartial, but I just wanted to make the commission aware of that.
Okay, great. Questions for staff? Fisher Hudson?
Paul, did, I think I saw an aerial, and this may wind up being a question for you. The, the trees were there once upon a time. Uh, they're in an aerial that I saw, but they're not currently there today. Do you, do you know?
Which trees are you referring to?
Eight-foot vines that were going to be affronting the fence to the, or south side.
Over in this particular area? I'll, I'll let the applicant answer that. This was the, these were the trees that were present when we took our photos?
Right, no, not those ones.
Okay.
Okay. Fisher Eluf, questions for staff?
Just a clarification, maybe Paul can help out a little bit. I'm looking at the drawing, and I can't tell quite where. I see on that picture that's up a decent-looking, um, privacy fence. Well, we flipped to this one. But can you show us where, where the privacy fence runs? Because I see some chain-link, I see all kinds of different fences, but I think the most important one is the privacy fence. If you can show me, otherwise, maybe Wendy can show us.
I'll let the applicant as well. We had some photos, which I didn't include all the photos.
Can you take your question? Thank you.
This was, I, I do know, so, let me go back. So this was the privacy fence that goes across, you know, the parking lot, and then there's a gate. There is a chain-link fence that is somewhat in this vicinity, right through here. And then, when you go...
On that, yeah, if you, on that fence you show, if you go to the right, that's where the entrance is today.
Correct. And then there's a privacy fence that extends to the back here, back corner. This is coming out the side door of the building, um, and then in the back, there, I'm going in the wrong direction, there was this ornamental alumina. I said that's an ornamental, that might actually be privacy.
It's a wooden fence, I think.
That's a privacy, so it looks ornamental aluminum from that angle. You're right. So that, that's a wood privacy fence through there.
So it, so it looks like, okay, that really helped me quite a bit. So it looks like there's privacy fence basically already all the way around it, except for where they are going to be doing the extension. Is that accurate, would you say, Paul?
I, yes, but I would like the applicant to clarify.
Okay, okay, thanks a lot.
Sorry.
I did a follow-up with apologies. Paul, did, moving forward, does that approach upon the five-hundred-foot setback that was requested?
Yes, it does.
Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, so, just so I understand the whole fencing thing, and I know we can talk to the applicant about that, but the photo, Paul, that's up now, that just shows, that's, I, I believe, behind the building.
Correct.
And that's a chain-link fence.
Mm-hmm.
Not a privacy fence, ornamental or not, right?
Correct.
How did we end up with so many different kinds of fencing? Then, I know, I realized that from a practical standpoint, this isn't an issue, but because we are increasing, obviously, the number of self-storage units, um, will they, will they still meet the parking requirements?
We didn't even do a parking account, because it's so overparked, and there's, there is an opportunity for shared parking.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but we've got orthocinci now in there, and obviously that's a pretty heavy parking requirement. I just wanted to make sure that the numbers still worked.
I, I can check on that. One question for the applicant, because I believe that you drive through, um, so you really, anyone parking on the outside is, I think I would like to hear how parking on the outside, if that's a customer coming in to purchase, uh...
Well, I mean, I don't know that there's enough space to have two cars parked, uh, and the units and the, and the so forth. So I, I guess I just want to, again, understand from a practical standpoint right now that there's, there are a lot of empty spaces out there.
Yeah.
But from a numbers standpoint, is it still going to meet zoning code?
Okay, let me, let me check on that.
With the addition.
Great.
No questions? Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I have no questions. That's, and I'd like to invite the applicant up to, um, if you wanted to add on to what the staff has said, and then we will have some questions for you.
Wendy Muller, Compass Point Planning, sixty-five forty, Corporate Drive, Blue Ash, four-five-two-four-two. Um, yes, thank you. I, um, want to keep things brief, but to keep it with a quasi-judicial hearing, I'll probably still comment on some of, do a little bit of repeat of what Paul did in the staff report, which I do appreciate. To answer some of the questions, um, we did not, when we looked at, or when I evaluated this, it did still meet the parking requirements. We just said, it stated that it met the zoning resolution. We have had discussions about what will be the intensity of use, of like, how many people will be anticipated using this outdoor storage? And best we came up with, and I can let the owner speak to this as well, is that up, at most, maybe one person, or one person is using the outdoor storage a day. So it's likely they will drive in and drive out and not use any parking space. So the current indoor storage, where people have to park outside to either go in and lease it, or go in and use their thing, would remain the same. So speaking to the, um, the actual application, the criteria, I also want to point out that one of the additional things that we did not specify, but, um, from the point of just improvements, because we believe this is an improvement to the site and investment, is, um, the owners will be repaving the area and resurfacing the area before they place these units on there. And I also want to re- emphasize for the struct- uh, for the record, um, because we keep, we've used terms, and I know that on the one image, it does look like the POD units, the portable storage units, that a truck can come in and roll on and roll off. That is not the intent of these. These, and, these are intended to be placed and anchored into the ground, but could eventually be removed if the outdoor storage or the storage facility were to close. So these will remain in place permanently while the storage facility is in operation. They will not be rolled in and rolled out, um, for temporary use off-site. But with that, I wanted to focus back on, again, for the record, back to the main PUD requirements. And, and I know Paul spoke to this, but again, with the compliance with the zoning resolution, the purpose of the zone district, um, this is really just changing outdoor stor- a variation of outdoor storage of these vehicles to outdoor storage of more permanent, probably, in my opinion, a better appearance, um, of these, these structures, and with some improvements to move the fence, improve the... And with some improvements to move the fence, improve the landscaping in the front. And we'll speak to Commissioner Henson's point here, I'll let Josh speak to that. And then applicability consistent with adopted plans. As, as staff noted, and as has been previously pointed out, this remains consistent with those previously approved plans. Compatibility with the surrounding land uses. We've made the point that because of the already-approved residential use behind it, which has open space with IHM unlikely to be changed in the near future, and with the surrounding commercial areas, that this has minimal impact on the surrounding uses. And again, with maybe one person coming in during the day, there's not likely to be any increase in noise or any increase in vehicular operations in this area. Whether the size and physical features of the project area enable adequate protection of surrounding property and orderly and coordinated improvement of the property, the vicinity of the site. Again, as noted, there'll be an installation of the decorative fencing. And the, they'll still retain a, a security gate at the front of the building that will be screened with Arbivite. Whether the proposed phasing of the development is appropriate, and the development can be substantially completed within the period of time specified in the schedule of development submitted by the applicant. There's no real phasing required. The applicant or the owner anticipates initiating this from the beginning or from the approval. It will take a little bit of time to have the, the owners of the RVs remove their vehicles and to get pavement down, so there could be some potential delay. But the anticipated completion is well within a year. Whether the proposed development is served adequately and efficiently by essential public facilities and services, which are existence of indoor plant, no additional public facilities are anticipated with this improvement. Whether modification of the zoning or other regulations are warranted by the innovative design of the development plan, the, again, as we've noted, we believe that the adjustment will create actually a more aesthetically pleasing appearance. The back of these structures will actually create an additional kind of privacy line that'll be permanent in nature. The adequacy proposed pedestrian circulation system to insulate pedestrian circulation from vehicular movement. There's no change to the pedestrian or vehicular movement in front of that building. All of that activity behind will be, behind a security gate. The adequacy of the provisions for visual and acoustical privacy. The plan does include the enhanced screening up front. I did quickly speak to the owner, Josh Lowenstein, with, who is with me tonight. And to the question that Commissioner Henson had, it actually predates their side, his time of ownership as to what happened to the trees. But these, the landscaping we propose will be installed. Whether the development includes an appropriate amount and/or appropriate access to dedicated open space, no open space was required with the original PUD. Whether the development will be detrimental to present and potential surrounding uses, as notice, as noted, the modification of this shouldn't really change anything regarding the use or activity at the site. The consistency of the development with recommendations from the township, county, state, and federal agencies, this will be consistent with all laws. I know that we've spoken with the, the building department as well. Whether development is consistent with the vision and goals as adopted by the Anderson Township Board of Trustees, we've already spoken to that, the plans and the PUD. And whether the development provides for adequate protection of natural features on the property, none of the noted natural features exist on the site, so those standards are not applicable. So that kind of speaks to those, specifically to those PUD standards, to have that on the record. I'm happy to be here and answer questions. But for the moment, if, if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to turn it over to Josh Lowenstein, the, the property owner.
Sure. Please just state your name, address, and affiliation.
Josh Lowenstein, 3616 Marburg, partial owner. One of our primary objectives here is to have some more cohesiveness in the outdoor storage area. We feel like the added density in Anderson Township over the past 20 years is more supportive for storage units than outdoor storage. And we feel like that demand has evolved, so we're trying to meet that demand. And we feel like we're in a good proximity to a lot of the apartment developments going on and can be a great resource for residents of Anderson Township.
We'll open up to questions, I'll, I'll start this time. In the past, or the way it's configured today, a lot of people drive in through the gate. And there's a couple doors they can go in to drop stuff off, pick stuff up. You're losing that driveway or that area. Do you feel there's enough space for your, your people to use that now, or?
Yeah, so that, the loading areas and staging areas...
Correct.
Will remain the same. Where the RVs are parked now, going down that, I guess, as you pull in the gate on the right-hand side of the building would be your entrances. The RVs are currently parked on the left and kind of your center parking aisle.
Correct.
The placement of the units would more or less mimic exactly where those RVs are.
If it was under full utilization, now, there used to be a lot of empty spaces on the left. And then on the back, you had the longer RVs along the fence line, correct?
Yeah.
Will you still have the drive-through that goes all the way through and exits on the other side?
Yes.
Will there be one-way or two-way traffic?
It'll be one-way going around the building. You're talking about going around the building and exiting towards...
Orthocensy, where it would exit.
Yeah.
And, and what about between, on the left side, the, the pods, or whatever you want to call them, is that one-way or two-way traffic?
Most likely be a one-way loop around, where we'll have some directional arrows to keep things, keep people from coming, you know, in one way and out the same way.
Okay. And I'm sure some other commissioners have questions about all the fencing, so I'll defer to them, if they don't, I will, so.
I can clarify that on the back. There is a small gap. There's some power equipment back there, that I don't know if that was placed at a later point in time. It looks like there's maybe a 30 or 40-foot section of chain link that privacy fence stops, the chain link picks up, and then it picks up the privacy fence.
Yeah, it was, I mean, from my personal experience, going back, I haven't been there for five years, but it was inconsistent. And it was wood, where my RV was. And it was, you know, the vegetation was coming over and, you know, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Henson? We can come back up? Jonathan's ready?
I'm in the middle, so it doesn't look...
It doesn't matter to you. Commissioner Goffler?
Okay. What are the hours of access to this, the outdoor storage?
Currently, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay. And no plans on changing that with the change? Okay. The proposed privacy fence, you know, really is on the south side. You know, we'll probably get into other areas, but what's the opacity of that? Because the existing one does have, you know, visual through that fence, not only on the south side, but also on the perimeters, you know, from the photographs and then my site visit. Is that going to be 100% opaque? You know, that you won't be able to see anything, or it'll still be sort of a staggered look that'll have, you know, some view into that area?
You're talking about the front fence?
The front fence, yeah.
That was what we had proposed, was going to be ornamental aluminum. We're happy to put a privacy fence up there. And we can address that opacity if it needs to be 0%.
Okay. And then with the extension southward towards Beauchamp, you know, now there's the honeysuckle, which, again, no one likes, but it does give you good screening, right? There's going to be a section that will be totally open to view into the IHM sort of property. You know, would look at possibly extending the landscaping around that and even that privacy fence. So, you know, we reduce the view into the storage area. Think that'd be acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have. Now, Ms. Mittel?
Commissioner McBride?
Hate that one, he reads my notes and then he asks my questions, it's so annoying.
I can't read yours, that's... You can read mine.
I guess, first question I have for you, so there, there are corrugated metal units? I just want to understand.
Parts of them are corrugated, parts of them are a smooth-faced metal panel.
Okay, okay.
I think we have a rendering. I don't know if Paul, you're able to pull up that.
And are they...
No, the...
The, over, the actual rendering...
That's the construction drawing.
It's, the links in mine, so.
And then, is the, are they, do they have a baked finish to them? Or are they just aluminum, or are they painted, or?
It's a, you know, it is like a baked-on finish.
Okay, okay. And would there be any advertising on those units? Okay, there's some down the street from my office that came smart all over them, and I, oh. So I guess then, my, my next question had to do with what type of plant material you were proposing on the, on the front of that south fence? And so, did I hear that that was going to be some type of Arbivite?
I can mention Spring Grove Arbivites.
Okay, and how many are you going to plant, or what on center, and how tall?
I was going to see, I, we didn't, we didn't add it in here, but we sent you the picture, Paul. I don't know if you still got that image we sent.
It was in my email.
Yeah.
You put on your 10 on center, 10 feet on center.
So the, the height of these units will go above the fence line?
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, the current fence, it would be like 14 inches above.
So they're, so they are going to be 10-foot on center, and you've got them at 5 feet. This commission member would like to see them installed at 8 to 9. So it's obviously up for the commission to, to discuss. And then relative to that fence, then, on the south side, you know, right now, there's that solid privacy fence, so you don't see really what's in there unless you go up and look at the gate, which, which I did. But the ornamental fence, and I, you know, I think those are attractive in certain circumstances, but that's going to give you a full view of everything going on in there, units and, and everything. So I guess this commissioner would prefer to see a solid fence along there and is, was suggested that it wrap around on that west line to catch up to the existing fence and that the Arbivite be continued around those as well.
Okay.
Where, right now, how, how are, how do customers handle their waste? I mean, like, because if, you know, I know when people clean out these units, then I don't want this. You know, what do they do with that kind of stuff?
We have a rumpy container on the backside of the building.
Okay, so it's, so it's back there? Obviously, I couldn't get in there.
Technically responsible for the room, but...
But, yeah.
You know, but it doesn't always work out that way.
Will there be any changes to lighting on the site with these, with the installation of these units, if they're approved?
Currently, we have pole lighting throughout and wall pack lighting, so the existing lighting would be sufficient.
Okay. And then, oh, and then, obviously, any units or any items would either be within those units or within your enclosed building. There wouldn't be anything left out in the access drives or adjacent to these units, or anything like that?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that was everything that I had right now.
Commissioner Eliot?
Yes, thanks. Ms. Moller, what was the setback you applied for these units? Because it's kind of weird, these are kind of accessory units. We're kind of treating them like a building. What applied to that? And what are the setbacks?
So they are, they would be along the lot line. But we had confirmed that there was no setback requirements established in this PUD. So the, right now, because right now, the vehicles are actually stored up against the lot lines as well.
Okay, it doesn't show it on the lot line here unless I'm...
It's along the, the, it is along the fence, which I think is slightly in as well.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like it's, what's the scale on this? 15, 60? I mean, it looks like they're a good 10, 10 feet off the rear property line. Eight? It's not a big deal, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding, they basically serve as the perimeter.
Yeah.
They're basically almost up against the fence.
It's up against the fence, but there's actually utility, he's mentioned, there's utility poles behind that. So the, the fence is actually in.
I see. That's what it looks like, yeah. So it's not like right on the property line, it doesn't look like. And then, yeah, just to, I guess I got confused. Is the fence you guys are, I don't see it called out or elevation of it. Is the fence across the south, the new fence with the new landscaping? What were you proposing it to be, the decorative wrought iron?
Yeah, so we had supplied staff and, and, I don't think it got into the staff report, and we, we didn't include it in ours, unfortunately. But it, yeah, it's supposed to be a decorative fence, but with a...
Yeah.
The opaque Arbivite in front of it.
Okay, well, I guess we'll have to have some discussion of that, because that does seem superior, in my opinion. But I've heard some other opinions, so I guess we'll have to, it's probably not a big deal to you guys either way. That's all I have, so, thanks.
Commissioner Henson?
The current vehicles and other things that are being stored, stored there, are they being evicted? Are you ending that business, or are you moving them elsewhere on site?
They are currently month-to-month leases. I think we work with customers to, you know, say, towards the end of summer, 90 days, 120 days. Give them notice up front and hope that they can find alternative arrangements.
They, they, these will be, there will be no outdoor storage of vehicles on site.
Could I just clarify? I want to, so, from the, when the units are brought in and put in place, if they're approved, then all the RVs and the...
All of them are gone, votes, all of them will be gone.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone want to speak in favor of the applicant? Seeing no one, anyone opposed? All right. Commissioner, any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, at this point? I'll close it. Entertained discussion among the commission? Anyone?
I do have one question. Paul, were we able, do we need to address any kind of parking modification, or, I mean, just by code?
I thought maybe you would forget that question. Because I really, I really tried to do a lot of math over here and was coming up with, because there were previous variances for parking on this, and I don't have those numbers in front of me. We would treat this as a shopping center, though. We wouldn't calculate parking based off of the individual uses, because you have an office use, you have retail use, and you have self-storage. So we would go by the parking calculations of four per thousand for a shopping center. I don't have, and maybe the applicant knows the total number of parking spaces you have and the total square footage of the shopping center. But beyond that, there are variances that were also, and I don't have that in front of me either, that were previously granted for this site. We did not include that in the staff report.
Is there shared parking agreement between, I believe there's a dance studio, Ollies, and...
The entire shopping center is under one ownership, so it's all shared parking. And again, we would...
And we don't know what the math is yet?
No, I don't look at my notes.
Again, not trying to be difficult, but if we needed to include a modification to the parking that's required, I would want to include that in the resolution to make sure that they were compliant.
If you want to take a quick recess, or you want to discuss, I can go find something that's on my desk.
I would suggest we include it as a contingent, that they, you know, are within the, whatever he comes up with, and we make sure that they're compliant with that. That's just one commissioner's opinion. Yes. I think we need to address it one way, either he says yes, they are, or we make sure they are through our, our motion. Any other discussion points?
Are we doing just comment now? I'm sorry. Yes, normally, I wouldn't be a fan of this, but in this case, I would say yes, because the outdoors, I agree with the applicant's, outdoor storage is, is very unattractive. And this way, we have a nice organized arrangement. They're making some use of this space otherwise. The fencing, I would leave that, I think your wall-to-wall units are going to provide... I would leave that, I think your, uh, wall-to-wall units are going to provide a fencing in and of itself somewhat. You will, be up to you as a business decision on what sort of security you want to add to that, because the fence is a little all over the place. And I do like the, since, since we're just going to be looking at the sides of a couple of units, I think that wrought iron finish will be superior to the front. That's my opinion. I heard some others say maybe something, something else. But that would be, I could live with either, but I do like the effort to dress it up a little bit. Thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, uh, you know, I, I feel like this use belongs to light industrials. Um, I think the history is pretty clear how we got to where we are today. Um, but I don't think that, kind of, I would phrase it this way, that it's using a PUD to eliminate setbacks, both on the side of the rear and the front, and allow a use that's not permitted in the indoor line. So, I mean, it's really the way we want to do business, especially as it's adjacent to a residential property. Um, it's a very slippery slope to be.
Okay. And my comment would be, they're, they're pulling forward, they're losing parking on what I would consider on the lateral side, uh, pulling forward to add more of the, the pods. Um, but I know, uh, the customer base basically comes in, drops off, picks up. It's not, they're parked there in the front, uh, usually not even there unless their unit is on the inside and they're, you know, that's where they're moving stuff. But they try and, you try and reduce how far you have to carry your kids' stuff to put it in the storage. So, I would like to see some consistent fencing language though around the perimeter because I think today there are at least three or two to three different types of fencing there today. So.
And I guess, you know, I tend to agree with you in terms of the use and so forth. I know these types of uses are, you know, going into more and more communities and, and being regulated. But I, I do think I would probably personally rather have these types of units than the hodgepodge of boat trailers, maybe on flat tires and, and RVs. I mean, who knows what his looked like and, and, you know, um.
And with that, we'll close the.
So, I, you know, I, I think if it's done properly, and I think that there may be some suggestions for conditions here that, that it, that it could work.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think I agree. Those were good points Mr. Henson made for sure. If, if this was brand new up and out of the ground, probably self-storage, particularly outdoors, not going to work there. But, um, this has been a long evolving property and it's, yeah, I think it's, it's really hard to say, but I think it's actually an improvement, you know. Uh, it's going to be organized and indoors. So.
Okay.
I heard some things about continuity of fencing all the way around. What are the, what are the commission's thoughts about that in particular, I guess?
I just think this would be a great opportunity to ask for some consistency in height, materials, quality, quantity, or not quantity, but the quality of the fence. Something we're all comfortable with.
So, replace it basically all the way around?
Use what's there that is acceptable and replace at this, you know, upgrade it at this point. So.
Yeah, I would.
Because the, the units will stick out above the fence.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Lewis about, you know, replacing the chain link fence with more of a privacy fence, you know. Um, the painted fence is so much nicer than the unpainted fence. So, you know, um, and then even though there is going to be wall behind it of the units, I think we're trying to mitigate the view of the units, you know, because.
Correct.
Whether you have a wall of units of 10 foot by 10 foot and they break up every 10 foot of a metal material, you know, still not as attractive.
You're talking about along that west.
Along the west. And then along, you know, anything facing the parking lot.
Right.
Or south, and then again, returning to west, make it out of privacy fence and not a decorative fence, trying to screen those storage units.
And extending the privacy fence.
Yeah, extending the privacy fence and then the small portion back here if possible.
Yeah, my view on that is I think that, that would be ideal. I'm not sure it's necessary. There's a lot of vegetation around here. I'm not, I'm not going to be against it if we add that condition. But trust me, the decorative wrought iron fence across the front is going to look way better than a privacy, a solid privacy fence that is going to deteriorate over time. The wrought iron's not going to deteriorate. You'll have those planting there. Trust me, it's going to look tons better than having a solid wood fence across there.
I wasn't thinking about wood. I was thinking about vinyl. That's what most of the guys are using now because of the.
Vinyl would be better than wood.
Yeah, I just don't want to see through that.
The wrought iron is going to be decorative and it's going to dress it up.
Yeah, but we're going to see what's behind it. And no disrespect, I'm sure they're nice units, but.
It's just two sides though of units. That's all. It's not, we're not going to see the boats and the tarps and the RVs. It's going to look nice, I think.
I do have an answer in the parking.
Okay. We have breaking news. We have, I parking.
So, with the fresh time, it was approved by the zoning commission with 444 parking spaces. So, I'm calculating a reduction of 31 parking spaces, which would be a total of 413 spaces for the shopping center.
Is that enough for this?
How much, how much is required then for?
Well, we're already down below what was required. So, we were at 489 before fresh time. With fresh time, we were at 444. I'm still very confident the site is overparked. Now, we're at 413.
And that doesn't include accounting for the store, the parking required for the new storage units?
It's a shopping center requirement. So, it doesn't matter what use comes and goes. We calculate.
I understand that, but, but it do they calculate in the square footage of the units? The new units coming in?
They are.
That's shopping center space?
No, it would be based off of the shopping center space. Right. But I guess my interpretation, the outside units, people are going in, parking in, those parking spaces are not counted in this calculation. Once you get behind the gate, they're not.
And there really isn't any parking other than.
So, the, yeah, people that are using those outside units are going inside the gate anyway. They're not parking out.
So, you're saying there would be a minimum of 413 spaces?
Correct. That would, that's the total parking once.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion from any commissioner.
All right, well, I will take the first crack at this and people are certainly welcome to chime in. Um, and that would be to recommend approval of case two dash 2015 PUD major adjustment for extra storage space at 7900 Beaumont Avenue. And that would be subject to, a recommendation would be subject to the following conditions, that there would be no advertising or signage on the exterior of the proposed units, that the, um, fencing that would be on the south side would be extended on the west, um, property line as well, and that that would be a solid eight-foot vinyl fence. Um, in front of that, on the south side and wrapping around a portion of the west elevation would be eight-foot tall Spring Grove arborvitae planted 10 feet on center. Um, that, let's see, um, that there would be no changes to site lighting or to, uh, building mounted lighting on the property, that, uh, any recommendation or approval be also subject to the two staff conditions that are contained within the staff report, that, um, the, a minimum of 413 parking spaces be maintained on the site, that all of the existing vehicles, trailers, et cetera, that are currently stored as open storage on the site be removed prior to the installation of the new storage units, and that any, that any items that are stored on the property must be located either within the new storage units or within the existing enclosed buildings, that there is to be no material or items left, uh, on the exterior of either the new storage units or the exterior of the building.
Sarah, do you have that? Anyone have any amendments to that? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Please call roll.
Mr. Henson?
No.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. It's approved four to one. Thank you very much. We'll give you a second to exit and then we'll go to our last agenda item.
Okay, so on your chair, when you came in tonight, there was a resolution from case one, 2023 PUD. This was added to the agenda for discussion item only and primarily regarding, um, condition. Number six. Condition number six was that the tents, tents shall be removed when the permit expires on April the 17th, 2024, um, which was just.
Is everyone familiar with the history of this case? Or had heard it?
Yes, I know.
Okay.
I think most of you heard it. Did you all hear this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm blanking for what we were talking.
Yes.
And did I hear?
She's.
Oh, no, you're right. Anne, you weren't here for this. Um, so this might not pertain to you. But anyway, I don't, it, the case was continued, so you might have heard the first case. So, this was a.
You guys ready?
So, this was a PUD request for the Anderson Township Pub as well as a potential for bourbon bar. That was the original request. Ultimately, the bourbon bar was removed from the request because there wasn't sufficient parking for both the township pub and the bar. So, during the second, um, when, once it was continued during the second one, the, the PUD was approved with the parking lot improvements, um, with the signage. There was a condition for signage. And then it was, the bourbon bar was phased to come in at a later time once they secured parking or were able to, to figure out if they could secure parking. So, one of the conditions was specifically for the temporary tents. It was originally identified on the site plan, um, just the tents to remain. One of the conditions actually was that, that terminology be, that the tents to be removed. And then there was a second condition, that the tents shall be removed when the permit expires. And this was the building permit. So, the building permit expired on April the 17th. We received a request from the pub to issue a new permit for the temporary tents. Sarah and I reviewed the minutes and we reviewed the resolution and our interpretation from the resolution was that the tents shall be removed and not be reinstalled. The applicant did not think our interpretation was correct and felt that the intention was that once the tents were removed, they could be reinstalled if a new permit was applied for. So, we added this to as a discussion item because April the 17th was obviously last week. Um, and we wanted clarification, Sarah and I wanted clarification on whether our interpretation is correct or if it's incorrect. If it's incorrect, we will issue a new permit for the tents. But if it's correct, we will require the pub to bring those tents down and not reinstall them unless it's brought back before you as a public hearing and asked to modify that condition.
So, Paul, um, when we say you could have tents, they do have a termination point because it's not a permanent structure?
Correct. Um, that is correct.
So, if they came back and asked for tents again, they still would have a termination date?
Correct.
Okay.
Our interpretation of the PUD condition was that the tents come down.
I did, I personally did not review the minutes again.
And, you know, from my memory of the discussion, yes, that was the intent, is the tents would come down. And we gave them until the permit expired to have them brought down and not that they could continue to have a rolling permit for the application of the fence.
Other commissioners?
That's, that's my recollection too. That was kind of a COVID holdover that was extended for a while and then we approved it and said that they would have to come down. I agree. I think Mr. Gothard explained it pretty well. It wasn't like a rollover concept that they were to be removed, I thought, permanently. It was.
So.
My understanding.
Ben, do you recall?
Yeah, it's, the COVID thing was, I mean, they were well over their original.
Right.
Timeline in first place, right? I think that was sort of something hence we granted.
So, you have four members who heard the case that were in agreement, not to speak for you, that, uh, we all believe that they should, they were supposed to come down by the date of April 17th. So.
Can you review this? We can review and then is that the review? Like, is the zoning commission wanting to review?
Personally, I would have liked to have had more time to review the minutes, review this letter, uh, prior to tonight, just to, I hate to do this on the fly.
Yeah, I'd say if you want to review the minutes, you can. We can review them and comment on it at the next meeting. But, uh, that, that's why I don't think we need to. My, my recollection is not foggy on this.
Mine isn't either. And if it was, the tents could stay, I don't think we would have put a condition on there to have them removed.
Right. Because if you, if you remember the discussion, it was, uh, tents have to come down, tents this, tents that. And there's discussion that they, they have to come down immediately. And the compromise was they have to come down when the permits expire. That's, that's how it was.
Cause, you know, if we didn't have that condition, then the building permit allowing the tents would in essence come in saying, taking them down. And then they could review it. So, you know, again, I agree with Mr. Ella. I'm pretty clear that the intent of that condition was that they be removed. We're just giving them extra time, knowing that the permit was going to expire on the 17th. But, you know, I, we can review the minutes and, you know, discuss it next meeting also. I'm okay with that too.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I would, I, I hate to say that we, you know, we need more time because we are beyond the, the deadline. So, I, I believe it's a view. I don't know if we need a motion, but, uh, if four of us are in, are in agreement that, uh, you know, in recollection and, and unless the, the minutes show something explicitly.
I think you do. There's one sentence that I think does.
Ben, you want to come, I'm sorry, it's not a public hearing. Sorry. What are you looking for, from us?
To determine whether our interpretation, the condition was, that was our.
Yeah.
We were.
You wouldn't have approved the minutes.
We did.
If it wasn't, if it wasn't what the intent was.
That's a good point.
We wouldn't have approved the minutes of that meeting if they were contrary to what the resolution said.
Good point. So, at this time, I'd say we're in agreement that, uh, based on, again, I, I feel we should have had more time to, to review the letter and maybe the minutes. But at this point, uh, I trust the other commissioner's recollection. I, I don't recall being elected chair, but that's, that's me.
If you're not there, you're chair. Just remember that.
Is that good? All right. At this time, I'll take a, uh, motion to adjourn. Uh, first off, do we have a, are we planning on a?
Yes, we are planning on a meeting, which is a week earlier because of the morning thing. So, the meeting is eight to 20.
And you already have cases.
They haven't officially submitted, but we are expecting it tomorrow.
Okay. All right. At this time, motion.
Tell us what it is. Oh, sorry.
No. Yeah. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second call. On favor. Thank you.